Item number one before we move to the regular agenda. Discuss, take, ask, retain, consideration, tax abatement agreement with Yellow Viking, Development One Limited Liability Corporation, property owner. I did a little research this weekend, so maybe we can bring some of the public up to date, where we're at, how we got here, maybe dispel some of the things that have been said, maybe not, I don't know. Back on June 12th, what we did is we allowed a lot of latitude, we allowed everybody to speak as long as they wanted to, went for about an hour and a half. Today, we have three presentations behind Yellow Viking, so we'll stick to the rules of the court. It'll be five minutes per person, thirty minutes per topic. So, I will set the timer, each person gets five minutes when we get to that point, if we ever get to that point. If we have a motion, we have a second, then we go to discussion, then folks can say what they want to say within limits. At thirty minutes, it'll cut off and come back to the court for a vote, then we'll move forward. All right, leading up to how we got here, right quick. November the ninth of 2020 was our first public hearing on Yellow Viking, and we've got some attorneys sitting here in room, if I get this wrong, y'all correct me, all right? We had a public hearing on the Solar Ranch Project, Summerville County, the first phase. After that, we went into regular session, just like what we're doing here today. Motion was made by Larry Holsey, seconded by Kenneth Wood, to approve order of designation of Summerville County Reinvestment Zone. Motion carried, all voting aye. All right, that was the reinvestment zone. October 29th of 2021, we came back to the court, we discussed the tax abatement agreement with Yellow Viking pertaining to that reinvestment zone. Motion was made by Dewayne Johnson, seconded by Tammy Ray, to approve the tax abatement agreement with Yellow Viking pertaining to the first phase, all voted aye. September 12th of 2022, we had another public hearing to discuss Phase Two, which is what we're here to discuss today, and we all knew that if the reinvestment zone was created that day, that they would be back to discuss the exact abatement that we set forth for the first one. We had a public hearing, September 12th, it looks like, I don't see the exact, at nine fifteen a.m. We finished that public hearing on September 12th, 2022. It was number twelve on the regular agenda that day. Motion was made by Dewayne Johnson, seconded by Jeff Harris, to approve order for designation of Summerville County Reinvestment Zone for Yellow Viking Solar Farm Project Phase Two, motion carried. That's what brought us up to June the 12th, when we had the hour and a half of debate and discussion, and then that's what brought us here to today, to discuss the abatement for this second phase. Now, it's been said supposedly, and if I get this wrong, anybody that's stopped this, you can say that the abatement was going to be for fourteen million dollars. That is not accurate. We, how you doing, Steve?
Hey.
We were in discussions in 2019, over many, many months, back and forth, the abatement went anywhere from ten years, a hundred percent, down to six years. I've got that here. Seventy-five percent, down to thirty percent, the sixth year. The county's portion of that abatement for the first six years is five hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Now, the state continues that on for ten years. They get eight percent from the state, every year for ten years, till the value's down to twenty percent. Is that accurate?
Well, it's appreciated after that. We don't get any tax abatement from the state at all.
So, while we negotiated this with Yellow Viking, was to give that abatement for six years, they agreed to put the transfer station in Summerville County. Transfer station is not part of the abatement, it lies outside the abatement. Back then, it was valued at what, about twenty-two million? Now, I believe it's twenty-five to thirty million, roughly is what that substation's valued at. That goes on the tax rolls, first day of production, stays on the tax rolls for the entire life of the project, correct?
Correct.
So, if you take current tax rate that this group will propose tomorrow, forty-two cents, say, let's just round it down, twenty-five million, that's about a hundred, that's about a hundred and two thousand a year, they'll pay in taxes, so over that ten-year period, we'll get about a little over a million back on the transfer station itself. So, what we'll do here in a minute, have a motion, a second, then we'll go forward for any further discussion, questions asked, like I said, up to thirty minutes. So, is there anything I've left out, what got us here today?
I think that's a good summary.
Yeah.
You said six years of abatement, but then you give figures for ten years. The last four years, wouldn't it bounce up from the hundred and two thousand to a greater amount?
It does for Summerville County, but I was talking, I was talking about the substation itself.
Yes, and I was talking about the substation too.
It will, you know, it values, I've heard anywhere from twenty-two to thirty, so I tried to take the twenty-five average. You would think the appraisal would go up and the value'd go up, but we hate to anticipate that, you know what I'm saying?
My real question was the four-year difference between a six-year abatement and the ten-year revenue stream.
The substation's outside the abatement altogether. Substation will never be inside the abatement. They'll pay full taxes. They pay full taxes from day one, that it goes on the tax rolls and goes into production for the life of the, yeah, it lies outside of the tax base.
You said that upfront, I'm just waking up.
Okay, no problem, I totally understand. So, what many of our residents of Summerville County need to start taking a hard look at is at our tax base, 2030 and beyond, they need to really take a hard look at 2050. I realize you think 2050's a far, long way out, but nineteen ninety-six was just yesterday. So, and that's the exact same timeframe between now and 2050. 2030, we start looking at the power plant, we feel very confident they'll get their twenty-year expansion, uh, extension in 2050, who knows what'll happen, where we'll be. So, all that being said, we'll move forward, see if we even have to have discussion or not. So, I hope nobody's carrying a gun except law enforcement. I'll make the motion to move forward with this tax abatement, as I have just described, pertaining to Yellow Viking Development Limited Liability Corporation, Phase Two. I make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Wade. Now, what we'll do is set the timer. Anybody that wants to speak, Bruce will allow you five minutes, you can, I'm sorry, Scott? Yeah, I'm used to Bruce Medley, the other attorney. Scott, we'll allow you five minutes, I won't start the timer till you start talking, I'll let you know when five minutes is up, and then anybody else that wants to come up and speak, or ask, or make comments, then we'll go from there.
I've got my own timer.
Do you?
You know, I was gonna say a lawyer's gonna be brief, but I knew everybody'd laugh at that.
Yeah, and my timer usually runs a lot faster than everybody else's.
You're in different lights than me.
Yeah.
Thank you all so much for having us today, I know, uh, last time, there was a lot of discussion, we don't wanna, we're not gonna go back in into that, we've got our team here to answer these questions if there are any. But we really appreciate your time, this is a, a, a great project, we think it'll do a lot for the county. I'm not gonna go back through what Judge Chambers just went through, but, um, I did wanna make a couple of comments. This, this first, this, this extension is basically doubling the project, so the first project was about a seventy million dollar project, this, this second extension's about seventy million, then you add the twenty million, you get up to, if my math is right, a hundred and sixty billion in total, twenty billion, which won't have any tax abatement. I know there have been a lot of concerns expressed, um, we spent a lot of time responding to those, I, we're here to answer questions, but I wanna go back through that, I'm gonna leave that.
Thank you.
The hour and a half that you, you spent, uh, last time. Just, just some jobs information, um, we're anticipating during construction, there'll be hundreds of people, I don't know what, five or six hundred people out there, working for about a year or two to get this completed, so hopefully they'll bring not only, uh, property taxes, but hopefully sales taxes for the city and county. And then, once it's built, there'll be about ten, ten to fifteen jobs for people for technical engineering, simple things like mowing, maintenance, and that sort of thing, so that's, that's sort of the jobs outlook, um, for the project. I think one thing to keep in mind, I know there's some people here from outside the county are concerned about a project in Hood County, approving or not approving, this project has no impact on that area, which is a part of an area that's across the river from the complantation, so they're, they're really unrelated, neither one impacts the other. So, uh, we, we really, and I'm, I'm being really brief here, but we really believe that this, this project is good for the county, it's, it's good for the local city in terms of property taxes, jobs, we've, we've talked to the local school district about working with them to have, um, educational programs with the high school, I mean, Einstein actually won the Nobel Prize for his theory on photoelectric effect, so we'll, we'll have a hundred and forty million dollar sol, sol, uh, solar photoelectric effect going on, so we can bring students out there, they can learn about physics, they can learn about the economics, and so we hope, uh, the company hopes to be a good partner with the community, with the schools, and, uh, we hope to have that opportunity. So, we, we'd asked that the, the county approved this tax abatement, um, like I said, we've already got one approved, so that can go forward, and, um, we hope to double the size, and, um, I'll, I'll, I'll end with a minute fifty left, so e, even a lawyer can be briefed.
There you go.
At least once in a while.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you so much.
All right, who wants to have the next five minutes? Who's up? Who wants, oh, go ahead. If you will, Chip, come on up, and if you'll just say who you are, where you are, so on and so forth.
Chip Jocelyn, nineteen ninety, Texas Drive, so. I just, uh, am curious on, uh, what you guys have learned in the last sixty days, or whatever, that, that makes you want to continue with this project that you didn't know sixty days ago.
I would probably, just myself, I can't ever speak for the court, you know, I never do that, I haven't learned anything to deter me from moving forward with it. I actually learned some things that I didn't know, because I always did wonder if there was a solar panel farm somewhere, that these went to a wrecking yard, you know, but then I was informed that they're taken back, they're updated, they're refurbished with modern technology, then put back out into the field with modern technology. The current group will last twenty to thirty years, but with modern technology, it changes, they'll be refurbished and updated, who knows? But that's just me, I don't wanna answer for them, 'cause I don't wanna waste his five minutes.
Oh, great.
All I can say is I'm disgusted with them, as far as environmental.
Them? Okay.
Yellow Viking. And, um, I do know that they plan on having this also as a pollination kind of habitat also for honeybees, um, which we do need, 'cause the honeybee population has been very damaged over the years. So, that was one thing I liked in their favor. The other thing is this place is out in the middle of nowhere, it's not gonna be along our highways. It's not gonna be like Middle Oathian, or down past College Station where I saw one recently, it will be out off of a, Hood County Sand and Gravel, it used to be out there, that was reclaimed, Sand and Gravel Plant. I also talked to the owner of the property, which is leasing to this group, and he said they plan, have no plans now or in the future, ever, to subdivide it, uh, 'cause the land's really not worth that.
And I'm not trying to pick on you, Commissioner, but you are my commissioner.
Yes, I know.
So, um, I, I, I think it's a lot of money, uh, for, for honeybees, personally, I, I think we could, uh, look at some, uh, some other options, if, if we want to grow our honeybee population.
But you do realize we're not expending any money.
No.
You're not expending money.
We, we don't.
You're actually adding revenue to the tax base to help you create money and jobs, so.
That's what we're all hoping for, and, I mean, uh, my last comment is, after our last meeting, I was surprised that it took, uh, I think, you know, one of the gentlemen who I consider a mouthpiece for the county, uh, said that, you know, the only people that are concerned about this matter are just, uh, a few people over in complantation, I don't think that's the case at all. I think there's a lot of people, I mean, this room speaks for it today, that are very concerned, it might be out in the middle of nowhere to you, but I have a lot of friends that live over there, so it's not out in the middle of nowhere for me. So, um, I just, I wish we could've done a better job, I wish Viking could've stepped up and done a better job, I wish the court could've stepped up and done a better job and, and had a forum with actual information, you said a lot of the data was wrong, and you quoted the fourteen million, I, you know, I didn't come up with that number, so I don't, I don't know where it came from, but I wish you guys would've taken the time to set us straight, the citizens, on this very important matter, and I don't feel like it was done effectively.
I've got a question for you. Where were you in 2019, 2020, 2021, 2022, and now 2023, where have you been?
Uh, I've, I've been right here, um, uh, for two and, two and a half years, sir.
All this has been advertised? You're even on the census.
Sir, if you ask me a question, would you please let me finish?
I might, I might not, that depends. Go ahead.
Whoa!
Taking up your time.
Thank you very much.
Taking up your time.
All right, so who's next? Who wants to have the next five minutes? We got plenty of time, we only have seven, eight, come ahead. Yeah, how you doing?
I'm doing great.
How you doing, Donna?
Doing very well.
Just don't trip on that wire down there.
Yeah. I'll do my best. My name's Donna Riddle Bassinger, um, and, no, I'm not a fan of solar, but my biggest concern is, it looks like it's gonna pass, and if, I'll throw an if in there, what's the remediation plan? Is it gonna clean it up, and is it gonna be put back to its original state? Is that in the contract? Has it been signed?
Not yet. The law had to be voted, wants it to be voted on, then we move forward, and, I'm sorry, go ahead, Scott.
It's in the league, and, and there's a state law that requires restoration, so, yes.
What happens to all the panels?
They'll prob, I don't know if you wanna mention it.
And I'll let Leah speak after that, most likely it'll end up being recycled.
No, stop.
So is the tech.
No, please.
Go ahead, sir.
So is the technology, uh, and anticipated in ten, or twenty years, gonna be something to be recycled? I have a very good friend that's got five pieces of equipment in orbit, and, and somebody says about solar.
Well, I just, I've.
It'll be eclipsed, probably.
There have been horror stories in other places, that the solar farms have moved on and left all of their equipment behind, and I don't want that to happen to us.
Yeah, it's state law, and we've got a contractual duty to our landowner, and, and at the, at some, at some point, we'll have to put up a financial law, I'm sure that's right.
Okay, a financial law. Okay.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Sir, would you like to come up to the podium? I think you probably have some things you'd like to say or ask.
Yes, thank you.
You bet. If you'll just state your full name, and where you live, so on and so forth.
Nemo.
We know you, Donna, we know you well.
I've got a lot of statements, so, I've made a copy, if y'all can follow along with that, it'll make things go a little smoother. I really have comments for consideration, not a question and answer situation, so things that stimulate your thought. Some of these things have been addressed, but not in a manner that, uh, we were easily made aware of.
Well, like I said, sir, if you don't mind, if you'll just state your name and where you live.
Yes, sir. My name is C.R. Rains, R.A.I.N.S., twenty-six ninety-two, or FM one ninety-nine, adjacent to this project. We've not really seen detailed benefits to the county that equate to the substantial tax relief extended to, uh, Yellow Viking. I know this is a green project, but it will still impact many of us negatively. I'd like to be able to review the negotiation points that Summerville County administrators were able to have at the table, when they entered their, uh, discussions with Yellow Viking's corporate negotiators. Are those available? Were, uh, were these listed from, uh, your constituents? When and how? Did Yellow Viking, your negotiators, address these issues upfront, or did they have to be solicited from them? Who spoke for each group? Will we be given preferential, preferential electrical rates, and will our United Cooperative Service, Electric Corp., be given preferential treatment? Will those whose property slash resale values plummet be reimbursed by the corporation for those of us that are adjacent to it? Will Summerville County Appraisal District produce the appraisal values on properties negatively impacted? Have your constituents been advised of anticipated property devaluations around the peripheral of this project? How much heat gain will those next to this giant mirror have to overcome with HVAC? What is the real radius of the elevated heat impact on our HVAC and our agricultural animals and products, uh, working environment? How much water, and from what sources, will they suck out of our aquifer and our river? Has an environmental impact study been produced and federal EPA audit? Traffic and industrial logistics, plus an EMF generation from this plant, are anticipated, but have not been openly stated, to my knowledge. Expected Summerville County economic gain has not been financially, dollar-wise, clearly stated, nor at the factual basis for those numbers. The Summerville County Appraisal District has not communicated with its base what study they have supplied to you decision-makers and the initial abatement, much less the secondary request. Why is that? Is there a representative from SCAD here to address these comments on their interaction with the decision-makers? What value of a river view, so touted by that appraisal district, is lost by the construction of this giant mirror? How will our quiet rural hill country quality of life be impacted? Why the, Summerville, why does Summerville County want this, uh, so much, uh, in a financial justification? How does Yellow Viking's financial gain balance out with Summerville County residents' financial losses? So, uh, my initial response to the secondary request would be no to additional tax abatements until your Summerville County constituents receive the enumerated benefits of equal consideration. I apologize for my stuttering, I've got a little bit of health problems going on. Appreciate your time and attention.
No problem at all. Sir, when you get on the twelve for June, were you here?
No, I, I was not.
And the only reason I ask is some of the issues you bring up were addressed by the environmentalists and the EPA and the studies and things like that. Now, the Summerville County Appraisal District, no, that, uh, you know, they've been made aware of what may be put in place, and then they take the agreement once, if it is put in place, and then move forward, but, uh, Summerville County Appraisal District hasn't given me any updates.
So, have they given you feedback to help you in making your decisions?
Well, we took, uh, you know, we took our tax rates, current, well, back then it was forty, I forget, forty-six point seven, which it is today, and, and figured it out based on, with all the deductions and with all the abatements, where it would be and how it would pay out, uh, past the 2030. Sorry, I've only got the first ten years with me, I don't have the last twenty years, so I'll apologize for that.
Judge, tell me this.
Yes.
When you say we, did you take advantage of any expertise that the appraisal district people might have from their years of, of doing this?
Wes Rollin and I have discussed it briefly, I'm not gonna say that we went in-depth of what, you know, was going to happen or not going to happen, uh, in our particular area, uh, except for like Middle Oathian, places like that, we're sort of in uncharted territory as far as, as we move forward with, what is it, eleven hundred and eighty-seven acres, is that correct? Is that right, is that wrong? So, it's hard to anticipate, 'cause, you know, tax, the commissioners change tax rate every single year, depending on values, so we can get a rough idea of what that goal is, of what the income will be, but as far as nailing it down to the exact penny, it is tough. Yes, did we talk with them? Yes, or I did, and I always had one commissioner with me, as you well know, we can't meet three of us without having a formal meeting. We met in executive session early on with these folks, went through many different scenarios with the court, uh, that was back in eighteen nineteen, of course, what's sad, three of the members weren't on the court at that time, so, you know, the court changes or potentially changes every two years. So, we felt like we had many lawyers involved, uh.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we had, even, even the independent attorney come in, uh, from what they call Purdue, Brandon and Purdue, Bruce Medley, he came in outside, you know, he's, don't work for us, he just gave his input on what he's seen in the past, and, of course, these folks, of course, I realize they're price landed, 'cause they want the abatement, but in that, no, all due respect, but just, we did as much vetting as possible, I feel like, as we did, but now these three, we can't hold anything against these three, because they weren't on the current, the initial court that started this.
Well, as you sit there with the figures that you have.
Yes.
What, what do you see, other than that ten years for the substation, the transfer station, uh, the benefit? And what do you see in dollar value?
What will happen at the end of ten years? It'll be ten percent, roughly, twenty percent will be on the tax rolls, so if it is eighty million, I'm just guessing, okay, if it is eighty to a hundred, you'll get twenty to twenty-five million on the tax rolls off of the solar farm itself, and then you'll get whatever the value of that substation is on tax rolls at that time, which will be twenty-two to thirty million. So, at the end of that ten years, you will bring on the tax rolls about forty-five to fifty million dollars, somewhere in that ballpark, and it'll be hard to, you know, hard to hold me to that until we see what value it truly is.
So, I could concede from that, that the county in general does have benefits that they stand to gain.
Yes.
But, I don't hear anything from SCAD or anybody, except that my riverfront property is so valuable, and now it's next door to.
Right.
A friggin' mirror.
Right.
That's gonna heal.
So, maybe the value will, yeah, that we have to find out.
So, what adjustments is gonna be made to that?
Right.
And what adjustment is the corporation gonna make for their financial gain at my expense?
To help you offset that.
Exactly. My property probably go from a three million dollar value, uh, can you sell it with that?
Right, right.
So, there needs to be something addressed there, or, or I've been paying taxes to people for the wrong reason for the wrong.
Right.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, sir. And I'm sorry.
Don't trip over staff.
Don't trip over that wire. I probably won't get the name wrong, is it Karen? No, come on, help me, Sky. High Hope Ranch, yeah, High Hope Ranch, but I don't remember the name, yeah, I apologize.
My name is Sandra Skree.
Sandra, there you go.
Normally, I'm talking about oak wilt and protecting our oak trees.
You are.
I, uh, spent twelve years living at High Hope Ranch, thirty-three fifty-three County Road, uh, two zero zero nine, and about eight months ago, I moved into the city, so, I'm now living on heritage place. I have a couple of questions. Are we talking about a new tax abatement on seventy-nine acres that does not include the substation? Is that what the?
Yes, does not include substation, correct.
Okay, so the substation's?
The abatement does not include the substation, okay? The property, the substation will lie on the property, they'll pay you the lease or loan, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, it's just that it does lie outside the abatement.
So, it'll get built with or without the abatement?
Yes.
The substation, okay, that's my first question. Second question is, um, that's my first and second question. My other question is, all of the environmental, sorry, the reason that I, this was brought to my attention is because I'm part of the board of Friends of the Brazos, and we got contacted by riverfront owners, saying what is going on here, and honestly, I did not know about this, 'cause I don't follow, I'm not a good citizen, I don't follow the court. Yeah, so, um, I guess I'm here to speak for open space in the river, but, um, so all of the, and one of our first concerns that Tammy addressed was having, uh, raw gravel land and the, um, erosion problems, and you talked about putting in, is that something that you can codify, codify in the abatement contract? Like, all the environmental promises they're making, can they be codified so that they have to be followed, so they're not just promises?
These gentlemen, one of the ones did the EPA study, sorry, sir, and, uh, times are ticking, so go ahead.
Okay, so, um, just very quickly, I'll, I'll summarize what we covered extensively last time. The, uh, the project is built, uh, in compliance with all of the laws of the state and federal government, so, uh, first of all, in terms of water quality, the stormwater, uh, general permit from the state of Texas requires the project be constructed in a certain manner to prevent erosion and sedimentation into the river.
And this, you're not exempt from that, for being a.
For being green energy, you're not exempt from the state and federal.
We're not, we're not.
Okay, well, that's good to hear.
And, and then the, uh, I think the other question you had, had related to HUJET, or, no?
No, just erosion, just making sure that everything that's saying is gonna be done can, has to be done for the county's, um... No, just erosion, just making sure that everything that's saying is going to be done can, has to be done for the county's benefit and for the state.
Yeah, so we follow all TCEQ laws and regulations in terms of stormwater quality. An additionally, a licensed professional engineer has to do the temporary construction stormwater design on top of the permanent stormwater design for the project. So, a professional civil engineer is going to evaluate the entire property site, be sure that the stormwater that is occurring on the property is contained and disposed properly.
Okay, and that's, I'm sorry that I don't understand enough to trust it because what I've heard and I haven't, is that most of the rules that apply to the state, from the state to land, doesn't apply?
That's incorrect.
Okay, glad to hear that. And something that Mr. Rains said reminded me that the state does have a takings law. And I don't know if the lawyers have looked into that, that any time that a government impacts the value of property, private property, that has to be reimbursed by the government. I don't know if that's state or county, if that would apply, but that's something I might need to look into. And my biggest argument for the tax abatement and the benefits is that I see open land as having its own benefit. It's not out in the middle of nowhere. It provides, you know, we give them the tax, the tax reduction for having ag and farmland because that provides a service to the community. I am vehemently opposed to the industrialization of Somerville County. I think there's value in staying rural this close. And by giving the tax abatement, I feel like I'm subsidizing industrialization of the county. Instead, I'd rather see that land that granted, there's not a lot of money that comes into the county, but there's not a lot of money that comes out of the budget for them. You know, they're, they're contributing food, open space, erosion control, wildlife habitat, silting and other pollution problems in our rivers. They're keeping Somerville County rural, which our tourism depends on, and all that grass provides oxygen. So, I just want to say that there is value in land in the middle of nowhere that's just open land, even if it's been a gravel yard and being, being re, re-put back into grazing land.
Reclaimed.
Reclaimed, thank you. This is not my, my thing here. And also, I've also read that reclaiming the land after a solar farm is not easy. So, I'm glad to hear there's a bond for all that kind of work and hopefully in twenty years, they'll get farther along. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. All right, we have time for one more, five minute, actually we'll go over a little bit, but that's all right. If we have one more person like speaking, come on.
Y'all know me here, I'm Chris Paulson, I've been in the county a long time now. And I'm going to tell you a story. I lived on one ninety-nine north a lot of years ago. We had Ingram Sandy gravel that was mined down the end of the road down there. And then they went ahead and did EPA studies and everything else, went through, I think, TNRCC, TCEQ, now is what it's called, did all their studies. And, you know, we looked at things like our sleeping soil profile and things like that out there at the time because they'd done cotton over the years. Would that be disturbed when they did the mining and so forth? Well, all the environmental studies came back well on it. So, Ingram was allowed because they weren't going to increase the biological oxygen demand in the river by mining on the other side. And the other thing is, is that they had runoff, sedimentary runoff, which increases turbidity, in other words, the water gets cloudy. And they can kill fish and things like that. So, that was not a concern either because of the way they were mining. And their construction, this is, this is what they're held to now because that, that land has been mined before out there. But when they start disturbing it, they're going to have to put barriers there to catch sediment before it gets into the river. So, you don't get that problem going into the river as far as the turbidity or, it's really not going to change a lot. So, here's the deal, is that because that passed on the backside of my property, here I was with mining going on down the river and I had mining going on the other side of the river that I had to look at and listen on Vaughn's place, the old peanut farm over there. So, you guys have been here, know how beautiful that was at that time. We used to have Canadian geese that would come down there and eat peanuts out of that field in the wintertime and we'd go to eagles and everything else coming through. Well, that stopped. And did it decrease the value of my property? In my instance, it really didn't because I had a guy that came down from Fort Worth that had mining operation going down behind his place and it didn't bug him. It was just God's providence because if it had been anybody else, I probably couldn't have got two nickels out of the deal. But here's my concern about it. You know, you're talking about a tax abatement. I think a tax abatement should be something that adds a lot of value to the county on the enterprise. I mean, if you have a manufacturing company that's making a lot of product and they're employing a lot of people and they're doing a lot of sales and things like that and you're seeing a lot of good things coming out of that, I think that's, that's worth a tax abatement. But a solar farm that's going to be put in, don't get me wrong, it's just that technology changes. It does. I don't know what technology's going to be like in ten years or fifteen years. Is this still going to be viable? Technology, something else going to come along? Because technology changes fast. It really does. So, you're going to have this big project sitting there. And this is going to be approved, I can't see it not being approved because it's already passed through all the studies and stuff. But as far as the tax abatement, you've got all this millions of dollars worth of equipment out there that's sitting there, but it's really not providing a lot of value to the county. It's owned by a foreign entity, it is employing very few people. And so, really, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know why they can't pay the taxes, it's everybody else, you know, in the county. And that's just for us. Because, that's what I'm saying, if you, if you really were employing a lot of people and it was owned by an individual that was here that was adding a lot back to our community and stuff, hey, that's worth something. I mean, there was a guy, I will just go on, I'm going to go a little over my five minute limit.
Yeah, you're not there yet, you're getting close.
There was a guy that, that founded Ag Cat Aircraft, which was the fastest, best crop testing aircraft in the industry. He came out of World War Two, he went around, he perfected this aircraft after doing, he was actually a spotting pilot in World War Two. Well, he looked around, tried to build a plant to build, to do a factory, and he couldn't get any money for it. And he finally ended up in Grand, Texas. And Grand, Texas finally took the bait and they said, yeah, you build it here. But the thing was, is this guy added a lot back to the community. He had guys that worked for him for thirty, forty years, he produced a product, he paid into the school system. He also, he also built baseball fields and all sorts of stuff. And, I mean, this guy was just outstanding. What he did was he added value to the community. That's where you use a tax abatement for, on somebody like that, that's where you take the risk. But if it's a, like I say, if it's a foreign entity owning this thing and it's just going to be equipment sitting out there and very few jobs, I don't see it.
All right, we've actually almost thirty-two minutes. So, we're, we're at the point that we'll come back to the court and we'll close down the public comments. I made the motion, Wade seconded the motion. Does the court itself have any further questions or discussion before we take the vote?
I'd like to make a comment, Judge, if that's all right.
Do I need time? No, I'm just kidding.
I don't think so. I talk slow, but I don't think so. I understand the reason for a tax abatement. I understand when a company comes in, I understand it's a recruiting tool, if you will, for the community, for a county. And I understand what it does and I appreciate what the previous court did in creating the one we have now. And I support that one. With that said, I do not support an extension to a tax abatement. I feel like what we have is in place, it's solid for the company, solid for the county, and I'm not in favor of an extension at this point. I just wanted to get that, that my opinion known and why I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote, Judge.
You bet. And also, I need to get on the record that I did deliver it to the other taxing entities on July thirteenth because we had to advertise it for thirty days. We had to deliver to all the other taxing entities thirty days before this meeting here today. GRMC, GRSD, Somerville County Water District was all delivered because they're all impacted by this. The school has entered into an agreement, I don't know what that is and I'm not business and we're not trying to get into that. That's a whole nother issue there. The school has already entered into that agreement. All right, so I have a motion, I have a second.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yellow Viking?
Damn, Tammy, I apologize.
Whether you get the abatement or not, you're still going through with the project, right?
Well, we have to take a look at the finances if the abatement does not pass. And we have to consider if continuing to work in Somerville County in that area makes financial sense. As I kind of talked to you, Commissioner Ray, because that portion of the project is so far away from the substation, it might make more financial sense to us to try to push the project more into other areas. So, if the tax abatement does not pass, it is very, we have to go back to the drawing board and take a look at the design and the project itself.
And you are paying three years back taxes?
Correct.
And then full taxes up to the abatement if it was given, up until it went online? And then after six years, back to full tax?
Yep. I think that is correct. I will say this to Scott, we can speak on this, you know, the tax abamments aren't designed to be a tax break to us as, you know, the operating entity of the facility. They're meant to be a tax revenue way for us to be able to make our financial models a little bit better, but still provide the same revenue to the county. Scott, you can probably speak out better than I can, but-
Yeah, I think, I think the key point is that the company, the county's not out of pocket. If we were a manufacturing facility, sewers, roads, water extensions, like I, I early on talked to the economic development person for Johnson County. And they put Louis Vuitton, who's also a foreign company, they built a big factory. In Johnson County, they not only had to give them a tax abatement, but they had to come out of pocket for sewers, roads and water so that the county had to actually invest several million dollars. We're not, we're not asking for any payment, any out of pocket costs, just saying if we build it for the first six years, we'll get a percentage off what we'd otherwise paid. So, I think it's key to understand this isn't a, you know, an out of pocket cost to the, to the county.
And, sorry, I've already brought back to the court, can you be real brief, what did you want to say?
I only had a comment because when we discussed this in June.
In depth.
In depth. I specifically asked a question that day that, and I believe this gentleman right here with the suspenders on answered it, that they were going to pay five years of back taxes and going forward up until the date it went online, they were paying full taxes, but they were paying five years of back taxes.
I believe it's only three, isn't it? You only had to claw back three years?
He answered five that day.
Yeah, it's, so what happens is, is when you change the use from agriculture to non-agriculture, you have to pay for a cold rollback taxes.
Right.
You have to pay the taxes the last, and I figure it was three or five years, but you have to pay the taxes as if there had not been an agricultural exemption. So, you're paying full freight on land, not the solar farm land for that period. And there's, I think there's some interest and penalties on top of that.
Right.
And we're paying that for the landowner per the league, which is typical also of this.
And I have another comment. We were talking to a gentleman, it was a Mitchell Bennett, Michael and I, and he was wondering about the land along the river that Sundance Ranch owns that you're leasing it from. You said something about a setback of the fence so far back according to noise, wildlife, deer, stuff like that.
Floodplain.
Right, floodplain. And so, the owners of Sundance will have that along the river for their own use, so it would be set back correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments from the court at all? Can you make it very, very brief? Because I apologize, I've already brought it back to the court and I've already spent over thirty minutes, so.
Yes, sir.
And now I'm even breaking my own rules. So, go ahead. Make it quick.
I'd just like to make a statement.
You bet.
If we offer tax abatements to this solar farm, we're going to incentivize other solar firms to come in? And is that what the constituents of Somerville County want for their county?
Very good. All right. I have a motion, I have a second. Now, let's just get it over with, get her done, good or bad, yeah. All in favor, said motion. That's three for, all against, that's two against, Jeff and Richard voting against. All right. So, we'll get this signed, then we'll get it filed, and then Michelle will email out copies of this to us, and then we'll go from there.
I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.